Twenty-two, has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Call roll, please.
Alderman Zaffle.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Yeah.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Rosick, so moved.
Second, Mulder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to comments and suggestions. So we do have some blue cards in this meeting. You have a total of three minutes to present your comments to the council. It's not a two-way dialogue. It's your opportunity as residents of the community to share your concerns and thoughts about any issue you have to all the council members. At three minutes, I have a little timer. I'm going to ask you to kind of wrap it up if you are going a little bit long. So, thank you very much. We're going to start off with Melissa Wright.
Hi. Do I have to state my name or anything first?
Yeah, if you could say your name, where you live, and the city, please.
Okay. My name is Melissa Wright. I live at six eight nine Thackeray Trail, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin. I wanted to talk about the safety of Thackeray Trail now that it's extended. First of all, thank you, Mayor, for addressing our concerns right away after the accident that happened two weeks ago. I don't know if all of you guys saw the video, but a car came speeding down Thackeray Trail, spun out and took out some trees, and it was awful. Thankfully, no one was hurt. A couple, I don't know, fifteen minutes or so right after the accident happened, a woman and a little child were walking down the street right where that car hit. So that was kind of an awakening for us, like, oh, my gosh, this could have been someone. So, it could have hurt someone. So first of all, thank you for putting speed limit signs up and listening to our concerns, especially putting signs around the park and everything. The two things that I am requesting right now is, I know that you guys are considering putting up the speed limit monitor thing. I really want you guys to monitor that data and make sure that we are keeping our streets safe. Don't just put it up to slow people down, but monitor it and keep it safe. And the other thing is, if you could consider a stop sign at the intersection where they sped up. It's Thackeray and Byron, I think it is. I'm not positive. The, I don't have the road. Longfellow, thank you. Thackeray and Longfellow, if you would consider putting up a stop sign there. There's a lot of little kids that live in that intersection, and I'd hate to see them get hurt. And I'd much rather prevent an injury than have another accident happen in order to force us to put up a stop sign. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Fents, or Franz?
Actually, Franz Michaels.
I'm sorry.
I live on seven six three Thackeray Trail, Oconomowoc. I'm here about Thackeray Trail's safety and the speed. We were actually the ones who, if you didn't see the video, was off of our Ring camera. That boy was cruising. And I don't want to see anybody killed. Thank you for making the road nice, but it's like a racetrack. It's tenfold bad like from when it was before. I'd really like to see some stop signs somewhere to slow some people down because today I actually saw a kid going on a sidewalk and somebody was going and not even looking. The kid wasn't looking, but I understand kids don't do that. They're supposed to, but they don't. But I'd really like to see some stop signs somewhere on that street. I will say, we haven't had any flooding. Thank you.
Very much. Joy Gaskin.
Hello, I am Joy Gaskin. I live at seven four one Thackeray Trail, Oconomowoc. I've seen you guys before, and it's nice to see you here for the first time. My trusty alderman there.
Hey, what about me?
Yeah, I know. I've seen you here before. I've seen you guys here before. First of all, I want to thank.
She did say "trustee."
Trustee, yes, yes. I want to thank Mayor Magnus and Mark Frye and Oconomowoc Police Department, and I guess everybody else that was maybe involved in the speedy action we saw after this terrifying thing, that, you know, we kind of felt this coming. And when we saw it coming, it was scary, but it was very quick that we had speed limit signs up and more police patrols. And now we've got the little speed thing, so this means a lot to us. And I know you're all very busy, especially Mark. I know you're always, you know, handle at both ends kind of guy, but we really appreciate that. So, I guess, I'm not going to tell Mark how to do his job. Obviously, he knows so much. But my concern is, it's the look of the road. And I've read some articles, you know, Google's always a great source for everything. And to me, the look of the road with the double yellow line gives it a look of a fast road. And I've done some research, and if something is a thoroughfare, it has the double yellow lines. And I know that technically Thackeray Trail is a thoroughfare now because it goes from one end to the other. But Thackeray Trail is not a thoroughfare. It is a residential neighborhood with twenty-six driveways that back out onto it. Our yards are too small to make a turnaround in our yards, to build one, or I certainly would. It takes me, when I bring my kids to school at seven fifty in the morning, to back out of my driveway because I'm at Whittier and Thackeray. So around the bend this way is Emerson, the four-way stop. So I can't see anything's coming until it's coming. And then when I look this way, I have the bend where the kid cruised around. So when I look this way and it's clear, I look that way, it's not clear anymore. When that gets clear, I look this way, it's not clear anymore. It takes me forever to get out of my driveway, and it's dangerous. I literally almost got hit by an Oconomowoc school bus. It was garbage day, speaking of garbage day. The garbage man was kind enough to let me out of my driveway. He was blocking the lane coming this way so I could get out. And I started to back out, and Oconomowoc school bus went around the garbage truck over a double yellow line and almost hit me. It was close. And it's, there's just too much going on on that street. And I think the double yellow line gives it the look of a fast road. If you drive around other residential neighborhoods, they don't have lines. The lines in the road are not there. And an article that I read, which explained it very well, said, when there's a double yellow line, it is assumed it's shared property. I have my side, you have your side, like territories. A residential neighborhood doesn't typically have lines because it is shared common property is how it's looked at. You share it with other cars, you share it with bicyclists, you share it with walkers. And that's why you have a feel of a slower residential road. As soon as you see a double yellow line, it looks like a fast road. It looks like, hey, don't pass here, as if passing would be allowed.
I'm going to have you wrap up when you can. That'd be great.
Darn it, I have some good.
I gave you an extra minute.
You did not.
Yeah, because your aldermen are giving you a hard time.
Oh, come on.
No, but if you have.
And I thought it would get done fast because I don't ever let it, you know, when you said it was not an answer back and forth, that's never a problem for me.
No, do you have any? Thank you, and thank you for bringing that point forward. Melissa Cron.
Good evening. Melissa Cron, eight thirty-three Thackeray. Thank you. It's nice to be back in here. It's been two years since I've visited with you, and I see many new faces. And one of the things about Thackeray Trail is we need to keep institutional memory alive. Lou? You were here. Matt? Kevin? That's it. Oh, and sorry, Karen, you too. How can I forget Karen? Karen voted for us. And so for the rest of you who weren't here, Matt, we served on the board, so you got my behind-the-scenes views on Thackeray Trail. We've come down to wants versus needs. The city decided two years ago that Thackeray Trail needed to be taken care of. It needed to go through. When I moved here twenty-four years ago, I wanted to move here. When I chose eighteen years ago to purchase my house on Thackeray Trail, I looked at my wants and my needs list. There are many things I wanted, some of them I got, some of them I didn't. But my needs were met by the city. I think we need to come to a common ground. And I can speak for many of my, the people on my street that we need to feel safe and secure. Safety and security is of the utmost. Prior to Thackeray Trail going through, you would not have seen as many doorbell cameras and security systems. I felt safe in my home. There are now more people in our neighborhood that we don't know, especially with lots of little kids, significant amount of traffic. I had a security system installed on the first day. My students laughed because, you know, you're not supposed to have your cellphones on. And I didn't realize that the notification from my security system came through my phone and it wasn't muted. Sixty-eight rings, sixty-eight notifications came between eight AM and one fifteen PM. I was shocked. When we were told Thackeray Trail was going through, we were told it's going to be safe, you're not going to have that much traffic. This was on a Wednesday. This wasn't a Sunday getting Saint Jerome after church traffic. This wasn't at the end of a school day. Oconomowoc High School was already in session, school buses had already gone through. All of these things had happened. Sixty-eight cars. That's not including the increase in Amazon since COVID, FedEx since COVID. All of those. We're looking at a major thoroughfare. We have lots of little kids, as you've heard, and I don't want to repeat. But I want you to think about the impact and the wear and tear on this street. You have an opportunity to make sure we all feel safe and secure in our neighborhood. And that comes down to, you are now directing people we don't know. There's an increase in the number of people using our sidewalks, which is amazing. It's now spring, and I was joking with the high school track coach. They can now come back and run our road. They are so excited to be using this area because they felt safe and secure. But that you're talking about is high school students, in addition to little kids who now walk back and forth because they have an opportunity to Saint Jerome's Elementary School. You have kids walking from Silver Lake Intermediate School. You are funneling traffic because we have a Walgreens, we have a chocolate factory, we have a bookstore, we have places for kids to hang out. Now that COVID restrictions have come, you are funneling tons of people down a street that used to not have it. And so we need to think about what are those things that we're going to need, and we can't wait. I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you to be proactive. So please think about that. Do some very in-depth, heavy research, starting now, continuing forward. Because football season's around the corner, and now that people know we're open and we're ready for business.
Wrap up if you can.
That's only going to make that worse. So I'm going to plead with you. Please be proactive. Don't wait for another accident or something more devastating. Thank you.
Melissa? What was the timeframe for that, those sixty-eight rings?
Between eight AM and one fifteen PM.
Okay, thank you. On a Wednesday.
On a Wednesday, and that didn't include FedEx or UPS or? Yep.
Bus cars.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the audience? Okay, I have one more. If you could bring that up, please. Please again, state your name, your location, and the city in which you live. That would be great. Thank you. Jane Owen.
Good evening, first and foremost, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, also the council, the mayor, and our new representative from Attorney Riffle's law firm. Welcome. You look a lot different. I am commenting on our refuse recycling pickup.
State your living address and city, please.
Pewox two five four Neshota.
Thank you.
It's the lack of service from John's disposal. I've been working with the city and John's disposal on it for five months and never got the spine for anybody to say, I'm sorry. Still haven't, five months later. The driver knocked the canister, no, excuse me, it was a large item pick 'em, which I verified in advance, partway into the street, which warranted a couple days later, our finest in blue, thank you very much, to come to our house and say, can you pick it up? Saw the truck knock it into the street, slowed down, but didn't stop, proceeded to the next stop. They have video cameras on their trucks. It was a loud crash. They knew full well what they did, but didn't do anything to rectify it. Lot of my personal time, my cellphone calls, back and forth between John's, the city, got to speak with some of Mr. Frye's wonderful staff, got to do an open records request. Thank you, Mrs. Conan, for supporting me on that. Still waiting for answers.
So this actually occurred in the city limits?
Yes. My family has multiple properties here.
Okay, thank you.
This was in the city of Oconomowoc in December.
Okay, thank you.
No snow on the ground yet. I've seen them tip over and leave canisters in the street. It's an embarrassment and humiliation for my family, for John's, for the city of Oconomowoc. I got kind of a snarky attitude, tone of words, tone of voice, no ownership, no accountability, no responsibility for the driver or for you. I think we need to move on to bigger and better. That five dollars a year, that's our money. That's not yours. That's after the increase. We're already going to pay. Did they offer to come back the next day and do it? Oh, heck no. Did they get snarky on multiple phone calls? I spent a couple hours of my time. You bet they did. I don't tolerate that. You either make the standard or you don't. They don't make the standard. We need to move on and try somebody else. It took a lot, and it's still not finished because I'm still working. Thankfully, Mrs. Conan will still listen to me on this topic. Let's try somebody else for three years. Badgerland doesn't make muster. Go back to John's. But right now, I would toss John's out the window. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other further comments or suggestions from citizens in the audience, anyone with a blue card? Then we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda items. We have three items. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda items before we request a vote?
I'd like to remove item six B just for additional discussion.
Any other comments? So I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda items A and C.
So moved. Ellis?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Duffy, if you could come up and discuss the release of certain obligations related to tax increment agreement Olympia Fields. Mr. Duffy.
Sure. As you're aware, and now that we can say, Sendix has closed on the piece of property of which they purchased in the city of Oconomowoc. One of the elements that they had asked for is a release from certain elements of the developer's agreement in which we entered into with, I got to get this right now, Olympia Fields MD, which is Wongard Partners. Oconomowoc Enterprises is Sendix. There are certain elements in that agreement of which Sendix wanted to be released from as it relates to that. One of those is makeup payments. When we negotiated the agreement with Wongard, they are required and need to guarantee increment. This will not remove the increment from the agreement as it relates to the improvements to that property. However, the Sendix owners will not be responsible for any makeup payments related to that parent agreement. The other element we negotiated in there was a suggestion of liquor license specifically related to Olympia Fields MD or Wongard. They're asking for the release or to recognize that Sendix as an operation or Oconomowoc Enterprises can request liquor licenses as part of that. And then lastly, any that, that no other elements, that's a fairly large document, no other elements can bind them as an entity without their written consent related to that. This release by no way and means releases Olympia Fields MD or Wongard from any of the obligations of that agreement that we reached with them.
Any questions to council for Mr. Duffy? Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, I just pulled this out because I think this is a, this is a big production for the city. We've got a lot of money involved. I had discussions with Matt Maroni from Wongard prior to tonight just to kind of walk through these things. And my understanding is that the third bullet point does not release, doesn't really change anything with regard to architectural standards or anything. It's just moving forward if there's some additional agreement essentially between the developer and the city with regard to the TIF and, you know, that's separate. And my understanding is it allows them to get a liquor license potentially at Sendix without affecting the, kind of the, we're holding the other liquor license for the whole development, and they can get one separate from that hold.
That is correct.
And I think that makes a lot of sense because we want to promote that development. So I'm comfortable with this. I just thought we should have a separate item to just review it. It's a big deal. We've got a lot of money and a lot at stake in the city. And it's a big deal for my district, so I just wanted it to be separately discussed so that if there were any questions, people could ask them.
Any further questions from council? Alderman Kavieski.
Not a release or a reduction in the obligation that was established with Wongard, which I think is notable. So, and I agree with you, it's not only a big project within your district. It is one of the premier projects within the community as a whole. And one question in regards to the facade improvements and the compliance associated with that particular building to the standards that were set. That is still in place, and those will still be met. I think that's also important to communicate to the community that it's not going to be a segregated project that doesn't have to comply with all that. So those are important.
Guidelines are part of an exhibit or an attachment to the overall agreement. They are not asking you to release from those.
Right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Rosick.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on. Without objection, I'd like to move items under new business, eight A and eight B forward. Council, any objections? Ms. Sullivan Murray, would you get us started, please?
Yes, I will. About a month ago, we were here to authorize the sale of notes and bonds, the notes for the twenty-two and twenty-three streets and water projects in our capital plan, and bonds for the Olympia, the final phase of the infrastructure for Olympia. So a month has gone by, and that sale happened today. So Phil Kossen has come back tonight to talk to you about the sale results and to get the resolution approved to finalize this for us this year. So Phil, come ahead.
Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Nice to be back. Well, let me start with some great news for the city. We have two documents that I'm going to walk through, and there's corresponding resolutions. But I want to start with, if I can move through this, I want to start with the rating report. So, once the notes and bonds were authorized, that kind of set in motion a number of activities. The first is we prepare what's called an official statement, which is a prospectus on the city. And then through that process, we have a rating call with Moody's. Now, normally it's a rating call, but this time around, for a variety of reasons, we had a site visit, which may have been their first site visit in over two years. I think they're just happy to get out of their apartments in Chicago, and they were more than happy to come up to Oconomowoc and see something about brick walls. So we did a site visit. Mr. Duffy was very good about taking us around. I think he's done that a few times before because he seemed to know all the hotspots in the city. And Administrator Frye was able to join us as well. And I think it opened their eyes to a couple of things. One, you've always had a lot of strength when it comes to financial issues. You've had fund balance policies, you've had debt policies, you have policies in place. You've had good growth throughout the community over time as well. And your wealth kind of factors are high, and so that all speaks very well to a rating. What I think surprised them was probably the level of development, one, that was occurring. And two, the amount of future development that's still on the horizon. You can talk about that with analysts, but it's hard for them to understand exactly how much room is still available for development. So they went back after we asked for a rating upgrade, and I'm not going to take credit for that, but we asked for a rating upgrade. And with a great, great, it was really great to hear back from them that they indicated that the city, which has been a double A two for a long time, has been bumped up to a double A one. That doesn't just happen. It happens because of policies that are established by the council and by mayors, and then a great staff that's able to execute those. So your finance, administration, economic development groups have really done a fine job in making sure that the policies that you lay out are in place, one, and then executing those for the community. So I just wanted to recognize all of their hard work and all of your hard work to achieve that. There's only, you're one of eight double A one communities in the state of Wisconsin now, and I'll read off the other ones. Appleton, Brookfield, Elm Grove, Fitchburg, Middleton, Muskego, and the city of Pewaki, not the village. The city of Pewaki are all double A ones as well. So you're up in the upper echelon and probably one of the smaller in a way, in as far as population to achieve that. Again, if you look at what they identify for credit strengths, and I'm in the packet, you'll see that they identify credit strengths as wealthy, growing tax base, healthy reserves, modest unfunded pension liability, which is most communities in Wisconsin, and no OPEB liabilities, very healthy enterprise funds with high fund balance and low associated debt. And under challenges, and I'll tell you, you're not alone, this is pretty much everybody in the state, limited revenue raising flexibility due to state imposed levy limits, that's everybody in the state, and exposure to tax increment districts. That's not a bad thing. It just means you have some districts that are relatively new. So there's always exposure when you have some new districts that are out there. So, great news for the city, and that does correspond in the number of bidders that set up, which I'll go through in a little bit, along with the interest rates that you would receive as a result of that upgrade. So there's real tangible benefit to that. So with that, a bit of good news, wanted to kind of talk a little bit of what occurred today when we took bids. So the first issue, if you recall, was really to pay for water main projects and street improvement projects. And the amount of the issue was four million six hundred ten thousand dollars. We received five bids, which is about what we'd expect, somewhere between three and seven bids, depending on the size of the issue and the maturities, et cetera. The winning bid came from Piper Sandler at two point three nine eight five percent. And the high bid of the five was at two point five seven, five two seven four percent. The difference between the high and low around thirty-five thousand. So wanted to give you a feel for who else bid here. Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis, Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, BOK Financial Securities out of Milwaukee, Baird out of Milwaukee, and then Hilltop Securities out of Dallas. People that we see on a regular basis, all of these will come and go on different issues. But those are the five bids they received, two point three nine on the low bid, two fifty-two on the high bid. So not a lot. When you get to be a double A one rated community, the gap between low and high kind of shrinks because they really understand the credit then. So as you recall, what we ended up financing here were, again, two point five million dollars in water main projects and two million dollars in street improvement projects. You probably can guess rates have been moving up just from everything you read in here. And I'll show you a chart in a little bit that shows what has occurred. But what we received here is a premium bid, and a premium bid means that they provide you with more funds than you actually request. And the reason they do that is because rates are so low that in the secondary market, it makes it easier for them to mark up the bond. And the reason they do that is because rates are so low that in the secondary market, it makes it easier for them to mark up the bonds and sell them in the secondary market. So they provide you with more funds and what you are able to do then is take those funds and you're able to do two things. One, you can put it into your debt service fund. And you can see on this chart in the red lettering, or red numbering, sorry. You can see that the premium was put into the debt service fund. It'll make the 2022 interest payment and a portion of the 23 interest payment. So when it comes to budget time, that'll just change what it's needed for budget in those, in those years. The second is that it will actually go into the project fund. So in the project fund, we're going to be adding around 50, a little over $50,000 that can be used for either water main projects or it could be used for, for street projects, whatever you choose. It really could be used for any public purpose project. It could be equipment, anything else, because we're issuing notes. And we have that flexibility in how the funds can be used. So there'll be an additional 50,000 that'll go into the capital project fund for, for future projects as well. We did see interest rates be higher than what we showed you a month ago. I kind of gave you a heads up that may occur, just what we had been seeing. And we're about, in this case, we're going to be about $118,000 higher in overall interest costs as a result of the rates that were received. So we, one of the things that we were tasked with also in working with staff is to make sure that the debt was structured in a way that we don't see any kind of spikes in, in tax levy for debt. And this is really just your debt levy that we're talking about. And the, the numbers, even though $118,000 is not insignificant when you're stretching it over 10 years, doesn't really move the needle. So we're able to kind of achieve that, that, that goal of, of having the, the levy for debt be relatively stable going forward. Finally, the, the last page of this exhibit is the, the chart that I had mentioned earlier and I showed you when I was here a month ago. And this is really a three-year bond chart that really shows what's really happened in the municipal market. Now, you know, it's, it's, if you look at this over the last year, it looks much more dramatic as far as the increases that we've seen over the last, really, two months now. And it's really a reflection of a couple of things. Obviously, inflation has a big part to do with this. Fed policy change where they're looking at increasing rates over the next number of months. And then also the, the war that's occurring overseas, all really have a factor into this. So we are seeing continued increase in, in interest rates. So really good news, a lot of bidders. The upgrade was great news and we're going to be right on top, pretty much, of the numbers that we had shown you for the, for the GO notes.
Questions from counsel? Alderman Kavieski.
The additional funds associated with the bond issuance for water or infrastructure, are those obligated to be utilized within the TID? Or can they be used anywhere in the city?
Yeah, this, this GO note issue is again, streets and water being not related to the TID. So what the GO bonds, which I'll go through next, was related to TID number seven. This is, this could be used for any purpose throughout the city, not, not tied back to a tax increment district.
Okay.
Question, changing the rating from a double A two to a double A one. How about how many basis points do we improve on the, on the rates? Is there a rule of thumb?
Yeah, we, I did run a sensitivity analysis on that today. We would think, you know, it's not a perfect, it's, it's a little bit art, a little bit science here. Somewhere between 10 to 15 basis points is what you would see. And we figured that equated to about $50,000 to $70,000 of overall interest cost that was saved.
More people willing to bid for it and at a lower rate?
Yep, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Would you like to make a motion on this item first and then we'll go on to the next?
So moved as presented.
Second Ellis.
Any further discussions? We're talking about item eight A. Consider act on resolution 22 dash R 3205, or 025, authorizing the issuance and sale of $4,610,000 general obligation primissary notes, series 2022A. Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Thank you, Phil. Let's move on to our next item.
All right. So we also took bids today at 10:30 on the 2022B issue. Just a reminder, this is really for infrastructure related to TID number seven. And really hopefully to wrap up the remaining infrastructure related to that tax increment district. Again, 10:30, we took bids on that. We had five bids. Baird out of Milwaukee was the winning bidder on this one at 2.8167%. The high bid, 29291. Here too, we received a premium bid. I'll talk about that in a little bit. The win, different bidders as far as who all played a role in this. This is Baird's syndicate that all participated in this issue. They do this on a pretty regular basis where they, they will sell off certain maturities to different, different entities. So you had a lot of players involved here with Baird being the winning bidder. We also received bids again for Piper, in this case Raymond James out of Memphis, Tennessee, BOK Financial and Northland Securities as well. If you recall, as we walked through the, the finances for TID number seven, one of the concerns throughout this has been trying to keep the, the life of the district relatively short. And so goal one here was not to see hopefully lengthening of the life of the district. And that's been achieved here, even though we do have, again, a little bit higher interest rates on this issue as well. So like the first issue, this also had a premium bid, as I mentioned. And we will have funds available through the premium to pay the 22, 23, and 24 interest payments. All that will really mean for the tax increment district is it'll help build up a fund in the tax increment district. And the money's really can't be used for any other purposes. And you have this agreement with Wayangard, this municipal revenue obligation. So it'll probably allow funds to flow to them a little bit earlier through the process and hopefully pay that off quicker. So that's what we show on page number nine is the cash flow for the tax increment district. Now that we have final rates and we're able to plug in the flow of funds and the MRO payment. So again, 2041 is still the projection for the closure of this tax increment district. Again, if we see faster growth in the district, hopefully it'll close out a little bit earlier as well. Like the other issue, this came in a little bit higher because of interest rates, about $179,000 more. But again, we're able to offset a lot of that by that premium, paying those interest payments over time. So again, same bond chart as before, but again, good results, a lot of interest in this issue. And the good news, we're not extending the life of the district at this point.
Comments from counsel? Questions from Mr. Carson? Alderman Rozak.
Why was this one a higher interest rate on the low bid, just because of the amount?
Term. Yeah, the term. The other one was a 10-year note, this one out 15 years.
Okay, 15, thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved Kavieski.
Second. Second.
Second Rozak.
Second Rozak.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Thank you all. We're going to move back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for coming this evening and your hard work. And Lori, thank you as well. Great job. On to committee reports at Public Services. Consider act on resolution 22 dash R 3018, awarding Oconomowoc pickleball complex contract.
Good evening. As I said in the earlier committee meeting, this is a big night for pickleball in the city, the state, and the country, as Dirk mentioned. We are looking at, as you know, with, working with Lake Country Pickleball Club in the city. We've been working together for a number of months or years. But this is to talk about a 10-court pickleball complex at Northeast Regional Park. So back on February 15th, the council approved the use agreement with the club and also approved a parking lot use agreement with the school district that night. Since that time, we put, actually, we being MSI General, thank you, has put bids together. They were publicly advertised and we received four bids. PLM is the low bid. Their base bid was $371,335. Base bid includes excavation, asphalt and stone base construction, fencing, the light pole bases and conduit for future lighting, the court coloring, striping, nets, posts, and wind screens, and asphalt pathway from the parking lot to the complex. The alternate bid of $8,355 is a stone path that would lead from the complex to what will be the future restrooms in the park. We have worked with PLM on three different tennis courts here in the city, including Blaine, Westover, and Lily Parks. They do great work, they're great to work with, so we feel very confident working with them. Financially, as you know, the Lake Country Pickleball Club is paying for the entire bill here. So we thank them obviously for that. The, the price tonight we're looking at is the 379,690, that's for the base bid and alternate, and also a 10% contingency, so the total would be $417,659. The quick update is that all their funds for this project are in the Friends of Parks and Trails account. So all the cash is here, which is kudos to them over a quick four-month period of time. I do want to thank a few folks. The Lake Country Pickleball Club, I know some of the board members are here in the audience. They're the people doing the hard work behind the scenes to raise this. Dirk and Bert and the crew from MSI General have donated their services for design, construction administration, and the bidding process. So that's a big thank you. And I know they have over 100 donors already for this project. And I don't know what their numbers are yet for the pickleball club for this year, but I'm sure it'll be above 250 that you had last year. So timing real quick, once this gets approved, we're looking at starting probably early June with the project. It's about a two-month project, so sometime, I'd never guarantee time, but it looks good. We have, they said they can get fencing in, they can get all the product in. Sometime in the month of August, we would look to open the courts. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved Kavieski.
Second Zappel.
Any further questions or comments? Kudos to the pickleball club and thank the whole community for kind of coming together to try to make this happen. Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, consider act on resolution 22 dash R 3022, awarding John and Lavinia Rockwell Park additional design services contract. Mr. Heffner.
Thank you. Back in October, the council approved a grading design and bidding contract with SEH for phase one of John and Lavinia Rockwell Park. Since that time, we've had discussions and been working on this. And the idea that made the most sense to optimize the time and the money spent would be to actually do the grading plan and the shoreline restoration at the same time and include DNR permitting for the project. So tonight, we're asking for $5,200 additional spent for the design phase of phase one. And again, this would help us both with getting additional typical cross-section designs for the shorelines and then wrapping all this into one time of permitting with DNR instead of two. And so SEH would do all those documents, take care of all of this. And so this would be phase one. And I do want to go back through real quick, as I mentioned in the committee. So phase one includes the shoreline restoration, the grading of the park. There will be the accessible, or I should say, there will be kayak launches built, not the second official one, but people will be able to use them now after this process is done. We're looking at bidding this out in the month of May, bringing it back to counsel for approval in early June and construction happening sometime after the Fourth of July latter part of summer, fall. Probably the same time, we look at the dam restoration part. Phase two then, which would include walkways, the front porch, finishing off kayak launches, et cetera, would happen in 2023. So I'll call that the niceties. This is more of the infrastructure piece. Also planned to add or put in a grant to the DNR coming up here on May 1st, which would help with additional funding. And I know the committee has been working hard on getting additional donations. So with all that being said, I just wanted to bring you kind of up to date where we are. Tonight, we're asking for the $5,200 of funds for design for phase one.
Any comments from counsel? Like, Alderman Kavieski?
There was good discussion during committee meeting and I think we've added on a couple of questions in public's best interest, who may be watching this. These funds and the improvements that they provide are going to be exciting for the community. So I appreciate the, the opportunity to approve it.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I do.
Sorry, do you still have a question? I'm sorry, didn't see that.
Yeah, it's okay. Just super brief. Guess I recall there being, how many phases do we have in this project? Is it three?
Well, we've reduced it down to two actually now. So this is, that's why we kind of had three, we had grading, we had shoreline, and then the so we've really tried to combine that and, and shrink some of that cost down by doing this.
Would, yeah, a couple, I don't know, probably three or four meetings ago, I, I asked for an update on, you know, kind of where we're at with the park as far as funding. And we've got no updates. After we purchased the park and we started funding some of these items, I asked for an update. We still haven't seen that. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, it makes sense for efficiencies, but I think we do need that update just kind of so we as a council, after voting on this, you know, pretty big park, know kind of where it's going, because I have no clue. So, but thank you for putting that together. It looks, this, this part of it makes sense to me, so.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved Kavieski.
Second Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Heffner. Next on our agenda is consider act on resolution 22 dash R 3023, awarding the 2022 Street Improvement Program contract. Mr. Frye.
We bid out our 2022 three projects earlier this year. We had two bids received, one from Wolf Paving, they're the contractor currently out at Olympia Fields. The other one coming from LaLonde, they were the contractor that did our project last year, so we were familiar with both of them. Wolf Paving came in at 3.7 million and LaLonde was 200,000 higher at, at 3.9. Both of those numbers exceeded the budget of the three entities within the city, the streets, wastewater and water, what we had budgeted. We reached out to Wolf because they were the low bid, asked if we could remove two streets from the base. They did agree to that. That reduces our cost by just over a million dollars on the project. So we also then looked at LaLonde's, just to make sure the removal of those two streets wouldn't have changed the order of where they came in as far as cost, and we did verify that. So we are recommending Wolf Paving to do the 2022 three projects at just over $2.7 million along with the $273,000 10% contingency for a final net cost of $3,019,700.
Went through this quite a bit at committee. I'd like to ask if we have any further comments or questions for Mr. Frye? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved Zappel. Second Ellis.
Any further comments or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
On to consider act on resolution 22 dash R 3024, awarding a three-year contract for refuse, recycling, and yard waste hauling services. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, sir. 2015, we worked with Waukesha County and along with 25 other communities and did an RFP for these services. At that time, we entered into a seven-year agreement with John's disposal for taking care of those needs in the city. That seven years is now up, so we're looking at, we went back to Waukesha County and along with eight other communities, went out for an RFP. They received the information, provided it to us, they do a technical score. They do a technical score, like what we do with our process, and then they factor in the cost, and then provided that information to us. As with our system in the city, whoever ranks highest are the ones that we're going to talk to first, which in this case was Badger Land. And I've been working with Badger Land off and on for the last couple of months, mainly because of a time on my side, not theirs, but they've been great to work with. And I will also say that I have no complaints over the service that John's has provided us, you know, these past seven years. But following the process, they worked well with us. Their cost, although our residents will see a $16 a year increase with this, and that is on their tax bill, is a special tax. And then, and then that could be reduced depending on dividends from Waukesha County, but we don't know what that number is, so I'm just going with the numbers that we do know. John's proposal came in, it was ranked second, and their cost was $5 higher than what Badger Land's was. So following that same formula, if we had selected them or maintained them, our residents would see a $21 increase versus a 16. The item of discussion at committee had to do with the one change, because overall, the basic service is going to be exactly the same as what we're seeing now for the residents. The one change is the number of days that they're going to be in the community doing the collections. With John's, they're here two days a week, and Badger Land was looking at being here four or five days a week. So the recommendation is, you know, following the process that we have in front of us is for the lower-cost Badger Land disposal.
Also, for the record, the committee prior to council made no action and moved this forward to council, for the record. Alderman Mulder.
First, it's noted that if we do switch, it's actually reduced to $3 per unit because of pickup costs.
So, so, yeah, so if we switch, then the cost of collecting the carts, which is in the contract that we have with John's right now, factors in.
Right, so the actual cost is...
Then you're looking at saying the savings is only going to be $3. But if we stayed with John's, it would be $5 increase.
Gotcha, right. So it says the services will be the same, so we will have a recycling cart? Is that correct, same size?
Yep, same size. So recycling garbage cart.
No blue bills.
The, all the yard waste pickups that we have in the city, none of that is changing. The bulk pickup, one item. If you have a lot, you can call, which is the process that we have now.
Alderman Zappel.
Director Frye, I know there's been times where I've reached out to you or someone in your former department in regards to pickup. About how many times a week does that usually happen when stuff's left at the curb? When John's wouldn't pick it up? There's been a couple of times, I know mattresses and different things like that.
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I couldn't tell you how many calls we get, but I know it's not many.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Shellpepper.
So there's seven other communities that we went in on this to do the bid through Waukesha County? Is that what happened?
Eight others.
Eight, and so, I mean, we all make our own individual decision, though, right? We're all not teamed up together on this.
Yeah, the other eight are actually, were, had a recommended hauler that's different than what we're talking about here today.
Okay, that's what I thought. And so the trucks are on the road four to five days a week.
Correct.
Kind of gumming up the system. We're saving $3 a year per household. I've heard some complaints about John's, but pretty minimal overall to how many I've, you know, how many people I've talked to and how many people, you know, interact with the service. I think generally, if they forget something and you call them, they're pretty responsive. I've had fairly positive interactions with them. So I just, I guess I don't personally support the change. I'd like to just, I mean, if we're going to save $3 a year overall because we make the switch, but we're going to have the trucks on the road four to five days a week, you know, twice as much, it seems like the hassle doesn't really justify it. So I'm in favor of just keeping John's.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Okay, two questions. So what, when he talks about the hassle of changing, what does that look like? What does that transition look like? And we haven't done this for seven years.
Correct. And so they'll have to set the date. John's will collect their carts and Badger Land will deliver carts to all the residents. They'll provide them, and I can have them talk about this, but they'll provide communication, letting them know what day of the week their new pickup will be. Now, right now, with it being the two days, we don't get impacted by holidays very often, but with the five days, you'll have it where if one of those days falls on a holiday, then it's the next day. So that information would be provided out, but...
My other question is, is that common for communities, say, our size, to have four or five pickup days? And do we know if other communities like that or think that's okay? That there's constantly garbage in different areas of town and constantly having trucks go through four or five days a week?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you what's normal. I know that, I know what we have here. I don't know what's going on in the other communities.
Thank you.
Alderman Rosick.
We could ask.
Yeah, ask what they have in other communities that...
Yeah, if you'd like to, go ahead and do that, Mark, and then we'll move over to Alderman Rosick.
Difference, yeah.
Thank you. I'm Susan, for those of you that weren't here earlier. Larger communities that we started in January include the Village of Waukesha. So there was another one part of the Waukesha County RFP, and they are four days a week. So the impact, what was your question exactly?
Communities have the four or five days a week. Do they have any, is there any pushback from that? Do they like that? What did Waukesha have before? Did they have similar to us, like two days? Now they're four or five days?
I believe they had one or two days. They had two, thank you. Mike's better at that part. But they like that there's a truck around. If something gets lost or not picked up, or someone has a late putout, then there's a truck in the area. And it's not like there's a truck going through your entire city five days a week. The city would be divided into five areas. So instead of having a couple of trucks on the road two days a week, you'll have one truck on the road each day a week.
But I think one of the comments in the committee meeting was, but then there will be garbage out in the city four or five days a week. It's confined to different areas, I understand that, but some area of the city, every day basically will have garbage out in their streets. You know?
That is true, but a smaller area each day. I, being somewhat new to this part of trash and recycling, it's not been a problem. So I'm not sure what you mean by there's not going to be trash all over the streets.
No, no, I understand that.
Right.
In some part of the city, almost every day, there will be...
We took over the Village of Waukesha first of the year. They were serviced twice a week, and we moved them to four days a week. And it's not been an issue. I haven't heard anything negative from the Village of Waukesha either.
Alderman Rosick.
Yeah. So, yeah, I had a couple of concerns about this. I don't like that the option right now is to convert from the two days to four or five and then drop in a holiday. So right, I have no questions for you guys. I just have a couple of comments. You guys can sit down if you want. I think if you throw in a holiday, you get like Monday holidays, like Labor Day or Memorial Day. Now you're putting trash out on Friday. If it's five days, maybe it's out on a Saturday. If you have, you know, a Thursday holiday in there and your pickup is Thursday, now it's a Friday or Saturday. So I don't, I don't like that conversion. I was actually here when we made that vote.
Joe Panz of who was here?
Yeah, right, just me. And actually, it was pretty controversial, because we had the, we used to have the up the driveway service, which was really awesome. And they literally would take anything, and you could throw out like a car, and they would take it, right? So it didn't matter. And so this was a change. I actually voted against it, because a lot of my constituents liked that drive-up service in my part of town, because we had longer driveways. And since we've made that conversion seven years ago and I voted on it, I literally have had zero complaints about the service that John's has had. So for me, that extra, that really, that $3 in real savings per year, I don't think that my constituents would want me to make that call, take that business away from a provider that has been doing good work, is a family-owned business, and has been providing good service for us for seven years. And I really don't want to extend out that garbage flying around. I also do think it's going to create issues with public services when streets are getting cleaned. Now you're going to have garbage in different areas, cans out during snow events, during sleet events now, multiple days, sitting all over the place. I just don't think it makes sense for what our community wants, so.
Alderman Douglas.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Rosick. I have a hard enough time remembering which day is recycle week. And thank you to my people on Thackeray. When I come home at night, they have it out and I know. But, you know, when you start switching a service that's an unknown service quality for such a small amount, I've had no issues with John's. I cut up a hot tub and they took it. So...
Tell these guys that.
They were, I told them about it, they were great. So like I said, that minimal fee change to a known service that I've had no complaints about, I haven't heard any complaints about, and the two days, I'm in favor of staying with John's.
Alderman Kavieski.
I echo all of the items associated with minimizing the days of pickup. The recycling fee, I think we should, we need to take a look at that. If we can maximize the revenue return on the recycling, I think that's in our best interest.
We're working with Waukesha County on that. I was on, part of a small task force that's working with them.
But it sounds like you have an independent program from Waukesha County? That part of the evaluation? And the only reason I mention it is because if we don't participate in this contract with you, is that something that we can even have a conversation with you on? Or is that something that is exclusive to your client base with the recycling program that you offer?
And the, whatever hypothetical revenue is generated by the recycling program, I'd like to see potentially whatever provider we have, and I'm in favor of staying with John's, is taking a look at maybe once a year or twice a year, having multiple, maybe 30-yard containers for large spring cleaning events and things of that nature for our community to pick up, utilizing those revenues, so it doesn't cost anymore. I think our community with maintaining two-day-a-week pickup, reduced garbage throughout the city, because you also have those routes that the trucks take, correct? So if there's garbage that flies out here or there, it will go down those routes. You're increasing the opportunity for that. I hear Ms. Owens' concern in regards to the service, and I'm sure that since you're here and she's here, you'll take care of that. I've had some constituents mention a few service issues, but they've been taken care of. I've had some service issues, and they've been taken care of. And I would imagine any community has service issues regardless of what service provider they use. So responsiveness, respectfulness, and addressing it is critical. And based on my experience, you've done a good job with that, which will also help me recommend staying with you.
Like to have someone entertain a motion, please?
Well, I'll make a motion that we amend the resolution to swap out Badger Land with John's, or at least, I guess that'd be the best way to say it. I don't know, swap out the numbers and swap out the title with John's and whatever they bid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I second that. Second from Spiegelberg. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg. Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our final item. Consider Act on Resolution 22-R3021, authorizing the execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement. Lucas.
Thank you. The utility, similar to last year, applied to the DNR for some grant money in order to help customers replace their side, their lead laterals, as part of our lead lateral replacement program. This year, we received $600,000, which would be about $3,000 or is $3,000 per customer that would like to replace their lateral using our preferred contractors throughout the city. So that would equate to about 200 customers if they all took advantage of it. So tonight, I'm looking for...
Just one second. Ms. Owen, if you guys want to talk, would you guys mind stepping out, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to adopt the Resolution 22-R3021.
Entertain a motion?
So moves, Zappel.
Rosick, second.
Any further discussions or comments? Alderman Shellpepper.
Yes. Are we going to be using any ARPA funds to put towards this as well in the future? What's the plan there? We're talking about the laterals right now, right?
Correct. And so ARPA funds are part of that equation that we'll be looking at. We're actually going to look at all funding sources available, because the ARPA funds have a little bit more wider latitude of where we could use that. If there's funds from other programs that are, you know, definitely need to be earmarked for lead service laterals, that's where we're going to look first in order to maximize...
That's fine, because it's an important program, just out talking to people, you know, the last couple of months. It's come up multiple times. And so, and I think we said in the packet that we've tried to address, you know, everyone who asked for it, I don't know if we addressed their concern or we got in touch with them. Can you, can you answer that? I mean, how many people applied for the program and didn't get it last year?
Last year, we had 70 people apply.
How many?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay.
Seventy, so that's how many people did it. This year, we have funds available for up to 200.
And you got, and all the 70 who applied got it?
Correct.
Okay, because, and I don't know, I left you a voicemail a couple of weeks ago.
You might have been talking with Scott Osborne or Water Superintendent here a little more.
Yeah, okay, because I had, you know, at least one family who said that they applied for it and never heard back about it, so...
Yeah, I mean, if they want to reach out again.
Yeah, I'll let you, I'll pass the information on again, because I did pass that on, so... And it's, it's an expensive thing that people have to do, to spend out of their own pocket. I mean, it's like nine grand or something like that, right?
Last year, the average for the homeowner's cost was $4,000 to do. So this grant takes care of $3,000.
That's good, yeah, okay.
Out of that $4,000. And then addition, additionally, the Exonia State Bank has a program available where they can...
1.2% right here.
1.5% for five years to help pay for that remaining cost.
Right, yeah.
If they have a lead lateral in their house and they have to disclose that on their real estate condition report, I mean, good luck, you know, they'll sell the house, but they'll be, you know, they'll have to factor that in. So if they're able to get rid of them, it seems to typically help the value of the house, too.
Yeah, well, and just to, I mean, the state's giving us the grant money. This is something important we should be using it for. And so same with the federal funds, we're getting the federal money. This is a program that benefits people, it's important, so let's make sure we're getting it to everyone who needs it.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Is this retroactive in any way?
These would just be available for this year.
We have a motion, a second. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Onto any staff reports, Mr. Frye.
I just want to jump in here real quick and let the council know that Joe Pickerton and his team have been working on a presentation to go over the lead service line lateral replacements through the city. It's a fairly massive project. They've put a lot of great work into it. So we're refining those things, and we'll be coming back. And then we'll talk about the whole large part of the program and funding and all of that. So this was just the one part of the $600,000 that we're getting from the DNR, but this is part of a whole huge program.
Any other staff reports? Okay, if we move on to any comments from Alderman. Alderman Mulder.
Two things.
Two things. First of all, not knowing how elections will end, and I don't know who will be in seats, maybe. It's been a true honor to work with John Chaz and Mayor if things change. I've learned so much from you, and I really appreciate having gotten to know you. And so I'm, you know, I'm hoping we remain in touch no matter what. So thank you for, for working with us no matter the outcomes of today's elections. I almost missed the meeting because I was waiting in line. The turnout was so good, so, well, in line. So I'm sure you'll be counting into the night. Mark, as far as the, the trash pickup, I think that that's the kind of issue that if we get wrong as a council, our ears will ring for the next three years. And I felt like we probably could have used more, and if I missed it, I apologize, or I should have reached out. I was, been out of town. But it feels like we could have had more information about that to help us make that decision and really evaluate and understand your perspective. It felt like it was really, really rushed, you know, and we ended up, I don't like to not take your advice, right? I mean, I think that you put a lot of thought into it and, you know, so I guess there are some issues like that where every single resident of the city is going to be affected and confused by, because we know that most of them or many of them won't get the message about new trash cans and new pickup dates, and it's going to be a big mess. So I guess the more, on an issue like that, the more communication we can get ahead of time versus having it just be on the agenda and trying to make a vote without having a chance to even talk to constituents really about it is tough, so.
Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, thanks. I just really have a comment for the folks from Thackeray that showed up. I've spoke with some of you, and I've also exchanged some, some Facebook messages. Thanks for coming out. I told you guys to come out, so I guess I get what I pay for, right? I agree. I think we should push for a stop sign somewhere else along there. I think Longfellow is probably the right spot for it, based on driving through, because I drove through immediately. I mean, I have been driving through, not a lot. I really don't use it as, as a back and forth. Where I'm at, I still go up Summit, but I think you're right. It's really interesting comments about the lines in the middle. I never heard that, so I'm going to research that. I think that's really interesting. The other thing I'll mention just briefly, I appreciate us doing the speed monitoring sign. I will tell you, though, I had complaints in another neighborhood that I represent. We did the speed monitoring sign, and it's not all it's cracked up to be because it actually gives you data you won't like, which is 99.9% of the cars are actually probably going really, really close to the speed limit. Now, this may be different, but my experience where we did put it up and there were complaints about people moving too fast, it actually turned out not to be true at all. The median speed was like 24.5 or something. The fastest we clocked in a two-week period was like 32. So sometimes that could actually defeat what we're trying to do there. Because some people see the signs, they slow down. It's supposed to catch you further on before you can see it or before you actually start slowing, and it shows two different kind of points when you, they first catches you and then when you try to slow down and you see the sign. So there's actually data that incorporates that. But it might not show us what we want. But without, without regard to the data, we need to stay strong in getting another stop sign and staying engaged. That's the important thing, so.
Alderman Douglas.
Yeah, I was going to basically echo what Alderman Rosick said. The Facebook group's been talking a lot about it. Even me coming home at night at 11:30 midnight, I normally pass at least two cars coming in to the subdivision at home. I want to thank, you know, the mayor, Mark, the police department for jumping on it right away, like you guys said, getting up more speed signs up there, the extra enforcement when they can, calls for service pending. I saw the traffic monitoring boxes up. Kind of interested to see what the data comes back at. Kind of what Alderman Rosick said, I've seen the data, sometimes it doesn't speak that, the way we want it to. But also looking at the data of how many cars is actually coming through for the traffic data, to see if there's actually an issue. Just being home all day, working in the afternoons, there's a lot of people out walking. I've seen so many people, I've seen so many new dogs that I'd never saw before. So, yeah, my kids use, you know, that area. The bus stop used to be there. It's moved now, you know, thankfully for me. So our kids aren't sitting on Thackeray. But we used to sit at the end of Joy's driveway, standing up in the driveway, just because even before that, before it was redone. So I'll be reaching out to the police department with the data, and hopefully we can figure something out. And I think the Longfellow Keats area is a good spot because it's halfway in between pretty much the, the area of Walgreens to where the current stop sign is down the road, so.
Any other? Alderman Kavieski.
You mentioned specifically those who were on council when Thackeray Trail was put through, and that was well-attended council meetings. And rightfully so, because it does impact your, your area where you live. And that institutional knowledge is definitely very important to have continuity in as we shift seats here and there. We committed to you as a city, and we need to maintain that commitment. Part of that commitment was to evaluate signage once the road was done. And we have a process in place for where signs go and when they go there, and that's come up several times in the past. And we defer to our police department, having the police department engaged in that area now as opposed to at the end of the year of opening, which is, I think, what the initial thought was, I think, is very prudent. Unfortunately, when you have somebody that doesn't abide by law, enforcement as well as signs are extremely important. So we do, and that's why having more police on the street is helpful. And I'm sure that our police department will evaluate that, and is in process of evaluating that, not only for signage on Thackeray, but part of that commitment was evaluating the timing of the stop signs on Summit and Thackeray. That is another important and critical item, as well as the signage on Silver Lake and Thackeray. So all of that were, were commitments made by the city, not by individual aldermen, but by the city. So unfortunately or fortunately, as citizens, sometimes you have to get up and remind those commitments. And I commend you for that because that is an engaged citizen, and that is a very important thing. On that note, it is an election day. I appreciate all of those who serve, some who have contested seats, some who don't. You've brought great things to the council as you serve and as the citizens decide where we go. That is the awesome part of this country, is the citizen gets to decide. I believe the engagement for the, for the vote today has hopefully shattered the 40%, which means that there, there may be longer lines than some people would have anticipated. Great. I will tell you, those poll workers do the best they can. And they are, they should be thanked as opposed to chastised. And it, volunteerism is a big issue, and it's being addressed in, in all aspects of our life, from church to the fire department, to those who work the polls. How we treat those people has a lot of impact on, on if they do it again and who else does it. So there was recently a little video snippet of a relatively well-known Oconomock individual, the difference between being nice and kind. Be nice to them. Mayor, no matter where we serve, I know we will serve. And that's the great thing about this process, too, is that it is a, a process of hearing the voices of the community. No matter where they ask me to serve, and I know wherever they ask you to serve, we will do that with the community's best interests at heart. So there are differences between you and I, and we've had those conversations. We've had those respectfully. And that should also be something that the community knows and that we replicate. Respectful dissension is an important part of the process. Respectful is key. Being kind allows for that. And I think we have an extremely bright future as a community moving forward. And please hold your elected officials accountable as active, engaged citizens. Appreciate it.
Any other comments from councilmen? The last short comment from the mayor, democracy is beautiful and messy at the same time. And thank you all for coming. I hope you have a wonderful week, and thank you to the incredible council. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves Ellis.
I'm older.
All in favor?
Aye.